... And, uh, there's a sign up machine over here. If you'd like to speak, just come up, sign up. We're going to limit this to three, three minutes per speaker. And, uh, you sign up here. If anybody wants to go down there, they can sign up. And somebody just don't, don't care if I'm... Okay. Good. Then we'll have a couple... Thank you. So, my name's Tom Walsh. I'm here at 101 Wood Street. I'd like to talk about the cut to the pump out boat. Uh, I am a boater. I keep my boat at Cedar Island Marina. And I'd like to make sure people understand that at the marinas, there's many boats that never go out. Some boats don't have a captain, and other boats don't have working engines. So these boats are used as summer cottages throughout the season. Marina provides air conditioning, water, electricity, Wi-Fi, cable TV. So these are very nice summer cottages for people who just want to stay at the docks. And the problem is, when we eliminate the pump out boat, I'm concerned that 2:00 in the morning, and if their holding tanks are full, that they're going to open what's called the Y-valve and release it to the harbor. And depending on which way the current is going, it's either going to go up to Hammond River or right over to Clinton Beach. My concern is that if you have young children at Clinton Beach swimming, or if you have people who do paddle boarding, they're never going to see the E. coli that's in the water. So I think this $7,000 cut is not, it's just too damaging to our town. If we're trying to redo the oyster beds, the idea that we could pass the $7,000 off to the shikiros, well, in that case, the shikiros may say, "Well, fine. We'll only service our marina. We won't go to all the marinas in town. We won't go up to Hammond River." So I ask you to think again about this cut to the pump out boat, and how important it is to the people who use the water, and will never know that E. coli is in the water. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Stotman-Lavitt. I'm chief prepper. Um, I wasn't really totally prepared because I was going to run in front of him and he started to strike me. But, um, I just want to say that I think that the school budget is, it was very trendy to start with. Um, you know, I'm something who's very physically conservative. I've got, my car's got 190,000 miles on it, and I keep going with it. I don't, um, pay any interest in my credit cards because I pay them off every month. And I think that, you know, so if I see excess waste, I would be very upset about that, even, even though my kids are in the school system. But I, it is just not there. And there's, everything that's in that increase is something that we really don't have much control over. And to continually cut and cut at a school budget because the taxes are going up, because we don't have enough revenues in the town, is not a good way to fix that problem. It's only going to make it worse in our property values and continue to decline. People move to towns where there is a quality of education, and it's been very good for my children so far. But every year, it's such a battle, and we have to keep cutting things and cutting things. And, you know, I just don't think that that's going to be the future for the school. And I really request that no further cuts be made to the school budget. And this is the only thing that can be here. Can I read your letter right now?
That, uh...
Yeah.
So that, have you read that one?
Okay, so I'm going to read this. This is from Mary Jo Phelps, who lives at 23 Delwood in Clinton. She was not able to be here. "About a week and a half ago, I was out talking to Clinton taxpayers at our beautiful playing fields in town. I had been having a conversation with a dad watching his daughter's softball game, and he was saying how people don't understand how important it is to invest in Clinton's infrastructure to attract new families and businesses. Another judgment was standing nearby and said, 'Wait, people think the taxes are high here? That's why we moved here, because your taxes are so low.' Now, I didn't catch what town he moved from, but it could have been any of the 86 towns that has a higher mill rate than ours. That's right. According to the article on patch.com, Clinton has the 87th highest mill rate in the state of Connecticut. Combine that with our more affordable home price, not to mention our wonderful quality of life, and Clinton is one of the best bargains in Connecticut. I urge voters to do their part and keep Clinton the wonderful town that it is and vote yes on both budgets Wednesday and May 23rd."
So, I'm really not going to address the budget as it is. I have confidence that the people who come from the town or who are in the form of education have put the budget together, really worked hard, really tried to do an analytical job, tried to look at, from their perspective, what was needed for the town. So I have no problem with that because I think people generally try to do what they try. But I do have some process issues. One, going into the budget process, if you know you're going to have an increased debt liability, which was obvious, which was known, you know you're going to have other fixed increases. And you have to set the tone when you do the budget, both the town and the form of education, and say, "Look, we need to come in and say we have a zero increase mentality, or we have a 1% increase mentality." And you can't just lay that on top of the increases that are fixed and say, "Well, those are fixed, I can't do anything about it." In corporate America, when we had fixed increases, the comment was always, "Find ways to reduce your budget in other places," because those are the variable opportunities that you have. And I, I don't know what the philosophy was going in, but that should have been done if it wasn't done. Because you just can't keep compounding the increases year after year after year and think everybody's going to be happy about it. A process comment that I have is that it's very difficult to see the actuals for the previous year, the budget for the previous year, and the budget for this year. I think it's all there, but it wasn't that easy to see, and therefore, you really can't see what the actual increase is. But the increase for this year should be on the actuals for last year, not the budget for last year. The other thing that I want to say is, and, and I back this up with my efforts, in the previous administration, I sent Bruce Palmer a pretty detailed analysis of creative ideas, innovative ideas, to look for a different way in which we do the budget. If people do the budget with the same departments, the same managers, the same staffing, the same part-time staffing, initially the part-time staffing, and it's like it went up a little bit, there's no way you're going to get any changes to the budget other than increases. There has to be a better approach to looking at creative ways to develop a budget. Combine departments, combine managers, look for sharing opportunities with other towns. These are all the things that we need to do. Now, I took it upon myself to send that to our selectmen in January. I followed up, she received it. I followed up again. She said she would give back to me. I'm happy that she shared it with the board of finance, but she never did give back to me. She never did call, she never did respond, and I think that's a shame. And all I'm saying is that if you don't start taking the people that build the budget in town, build the budget in the board of education, the board of finance, a creative way of looking at costs, looking at expenses, you're just going to get increases every year, compounded year after year after year, and we go through one, two, three budget references. So I hope that we could do something about the process. Come on. Oh, okay. Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mary Beth Green, 12 James Vincent Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Henry Carter Hall Library Board of Trustees. They sent a letter today, and I was requested to read it. Um, the Henry Carter Hall Library Board of Trustees would like to extend a note of appreciation to John and the board during these difficult times. We would also like to take a minute to clarify some of the misinformation regarding the library's finances. The Henry Carter Hall Library is the sole benefactor of the Arabella Maggs Hall Trust. The $1.2 million trust is managed and controlled by S.A. Savings Bank as trustee, and we currently receive approximately 6% annually, or $6,000 a month, from the income of the trust. We have no authority to invade the principal nor to demand a larger distribution of income, which is subject to the exclusive discretion of the trustee. In addition to this income, the library has roughly $627,000 in accumulated donations that were intended for improvements to the operation and services of the library above and beyond the basic funding provided by the town of Clinton. We also have a donor restricted $88,000 to be used solely for children's room programs, equipment, and events. Though, through additional prudent budgeting and operational reductions, the Henry Carter Hall Library Board of Trustees believes it is capable of absorbing a $10,000 reduction in requested town funds for the 1819 fiscal year. Please remember that the library budget is already $8,900 less than what we believe we need to operate in the town's best interest. Our previous $746,000 board of selectmen and board of finance approved budget for 1819 is flat funded from the current, this current fiscal year. This cut would represent an almost $20,000 funding cut to the true operating budget of 1819. Also note that the library budget has always been low on administrative services and places public service in the forefront of budgetary funding. Thank you. Signed, Dave Reynolds, Henry Carter Hall Library Board of Trustees treasurer.
The board of mayor and state board of trustees for this celebration, and to be the 25,000 dollar... Annalise Fazian.
Thank you, Annalise Fazian, 37 Benner Road. I'm here to, to speak on two issues tonight. The first issue, um, I would just like to feedback on Mr. Welsh's comments with regards to the pump out boat, and ask that the board of finance consider reinstating that $7,000 to fund the pump out boat. I, uh, secondly, want to speak on matters of the board of education budget. Um, I moved to Clinton with my husband, I don't know, 15 years ago. We moved here for two reasons. One was because it was a cute town on a beautiful shoreline where we could raise our family in the good, good school system. And so here I am, here after we are advocating to maintain those things for my family. And so, as an added paddle boarder, my family and I joined a boat club, were on the water all summer. I certainly won't be bringing my boat, my paddleboard down to Clinton Beach, and I think we'll lose a lot of members with regards to, um, the usership of that beach if the pump out boat is cut from the budget. Not going to put my family at risk nor myself with regards to that. In terms of the education budget, um, my, my children have, have had nothing but the most wonderful experience in the Clinton public school systems. And that is because the board of education has driven the board in its priorities with regards to student need. Student need is what drives the budget. Yes, there are fixed increases, but what really drives the budget is what is in the best interest for our students. I appreciate the board, uh, for continuing to be and honor that process. Um, I understand, um, it's a yearly site, year after year, um, but I can only speak from the heart when I say my kids have had only the best educational experience with regards to the enrichment opportunities they've been offered, um, the academic experiences they've had in the classroom, the teachers that they've had throughout the years. Um, and I, we are at our wit's end. We are at our wit's end. Any other cuts, I don't know what I would consider at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. That is the rest of the speaker. I have a list. If anyone wants to go up and speak, please come, sit down, and speak.
Connie Moore to the Blackus Road. I've been a Clinton resident for 19 years. I've been a parent for 11, and a proud Clinton teacher for the past five. Um, and I'm here just to share a little experience more than parents. I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and I keep hearing things about not wanting children here, not wanting families here, that they tax our resources. And clearly, I'm invested in this town. I'm committed to this town. And yet, I sit in these meetings and I think, "They don't want my family here. They don't want my kids here. Is this a town I want my child to continue to be in?" And I'm starting to ask those questions. I wonder how many other people who maybe aren't as vested in this town, or are considering coming to this town, are really willing to come to this town. We want to broaden our tax rates. We want to bring people into our town so that we aren't as burdened as taxpayers. And yet, when we talk about different things that are hitting Clinton taxpayers, well, several years ago, my position was one of the positions eliminated. I was able to stay with the district because another position had been done. But these cuts are affecting Clinton taxpayers in many ways, and there are other teachers who have been eliminated who are also Clinton taxpayers. So I respectfully, I respect all of everyone's opinions. I respect, I respect the work that's been done here, but I ask you, please, send this forward and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Laura Pearson.
Good evening. My name is Laura Pearson. I'm at 62 Wood Road. Um, I'm also the vice chair of W P C C. Um, earlier today, Matt Kennedy, who's the chair, should have emailed and sent along his, um, uh, opinions on both our budget for water pollution as well as the, um, pump out boat, which he is, uh, not in favor of having cut from the budget. Um, but I just want to very quickly read so it gets into the minutes and onto the videotape. Uh, one of the statements that he made about the pump out boat. Um, here is a quote from the Connecticut D E V P website that I think every member of the board of selectmen and the board of finance should read. "Scientists have shown there is more bacteria in untreated waste discharged by one boat than in the treated wastewater discharged by a small city. We should all be shocked by this and be compelled to take measures to protect our lives." That's all I have to say. As long as you've all received this email and it gets noted into the final minutes, we appreciate it.
It's written in terms of one quarter of the record.
It is, I believe. Mary. Thank you very much.
I agree.
Good evening, members of board of finance. Many education and community advocates aren't here tonight because they are celebrating collections of awards, participating in concerts and art shows, and taking students to sports, all while feeling completely unsupported by some of our own selectmen. Others vested, others vested in our community are, as we speak, serving on awards and commissions tonight, volunteering at the soup pantry and cannot be here to speak. The quote, burdens on taxpayers are actually out doing great things. They are being addressed. Please don't cut anymore because town hall style of doing government is so very antiquated. To make people show up to advocate for or against something in this day and age, we're no longer in the course of lucky days, we should be able to send our opinions by text, by email, to be included in the record. Am I disappointed that the honest budget that represents what this town needs was defeated? You bet I am, and I'm not alone. Clinton is a voice for economic development and for thrive. We will always believe and advocate for in the greatness of this community, both our young and our old, and tonight I'm asking you to support it by not cutting anymore. Thank you.
Marie Moore. Shut up.
Hi, I'm Marie. Hi, I'm Marie Anne Moore. I'm 64 Long Hill Road. And I'd like to just mention something that I think is really obvious, but I don't feel like it gets mentioned much at these meetings, which is that everybody who's sitting in this room right now who lives in Clinton, we've got more house for our money than we would have in another town. When I came here about 16 years ago with my husband with a toddler in preschool, we looked in Madison, Guilford, and Clinton for about two minutes because we were not going to get any house for our money in Guilford or Madison. We switched it to Clinton, Old Sabre, and Westbrook, and from there, we narrowed it down to Clinton because what a beautiful town it was, and the fact that here you've got even more house for your money than you did in Old Sabre or Westbrook. So if you have a town like Old Sabre, like Clinton, and let's say it costs $12 a year to run the town, if you probably paid $3 for your house, you're going to have to pay a mill rate of four. If you paid $6 for your house, you only have to pay a mill rate of two. So of all of the really just screaming about mill rate, I understand the point about mill rate and ivory to businesses, but when it comes to your house, you chose a town where you've got more house for your money. Therefore, in order to get to the amount of money that it needs to run the town, of course, your mill rate's going to be higher because your house costs less. Um, and, uh, you, but I, like I said, I understand the point that the mill rate is relevant to businesses, but you can't destroy the schools and the services in the very town that you're trying to sell. You might call the school Children in Burden, as somebody did at the meeting in April, or you might try to turn it into Retirement Town, as some local members of this community want it to be. But the fact is that the lifeline of any town is families. We need families. We need to support our schools and our town, and that's, that's the lifeline of the town. And I respectfully request that the board of, um, finance send the number as it was decided to the voters. And this town meeting here that was from, um, the Hartford Current, it's from New Britain, and they had a town meeting, um, before their council or whatever they are. It's not like this is a little different, but, um, people were getting a chance to come in and speak. The, um, proposal, um, that got put forward would hold their tax rate steady at 50 mils. So the owner of a home that is assessed around $140,000 would pay $7,070 next year. It's so important to remember that we not only got more house for our money, but our mill rate is normal too. We're 86, and 86 towns in Connecticut have a higher mill rate, 83 have a lower mill rate. So we're doing better than halfway. We've got a bargain on our homes, and our mill rate is being held totally steady. And I just wish that people would stop trying to punish this town for just being normal and doing a good job. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Colbank, 8th from Wood Lane. And, um, I'm here to support both the education and town budgets, but I'm especially passionate about our education budget, and therefore, I have a lot of numbers, so I'm going to refer to my notes. Um, the CTA claims our education budget is excessive, and their motive tonight is to cut education further. In reality, the facts prove the contrary, especially as Clinton compares to surrounding towns. According to Realtor.com, it's proven that the communities that support education attract families to a town which is already near a town. It drives up property values, attracts businesses, increases the tax base, and decreases mill rates. And again, we are addressing that of reasonable mill rates. Um, the real tale of two cities, and there's been comparisons, Old Sabre to Clinton demonstrates this point. Old Sabre spends more on education. Their seven-year average education operating budget increases 2.75% compared to Clinton's 0.85%. The cost for people spending is over $19,000 compared to Clinton's 17,500. Old Sabre's average home values are 140% higher than Clinton, 350,000 versus 250,000. Again, as Maria said, you know, it's, it's a bargain. Um, the effect of the mill rate, Old Sabre's mill rate is 34% lower than Clinton's, 19.66 compared to 29.91. Lastly, Old Sabre's five-year enrollment decline is higher. Old Sabre is 15.9 versus Clinton's 11.2. Yet they continue to, they invest in education. Sources are at site dot C T dot gov, Zillow, and surf dot com. If education continues to be cut, Clinton will continue to downward spiral. And again, some of these points have been made, not only will families not move to Clinton, but existing, existing families will leave, and I have already heard discussion about this, more families will choose private schools, supporting other towns, and property values will continue to decline. We won't retract businesses, and mill rates will continue to, to rise. If we don't retract families, we will be a 55-plus community, but what happens after those people are gone will be a ghost town. So, as I said last year, the solution to the Clinton situation is not slashing town, our education, and vital town services, but economic development. The children in this town are not a burden, they are an asset in our future. I request the board of ed to pass the budgets as proposed and not make additional cuts. Honestly, I would actually request that we, we, of the, from what we voted on the last, and May 10th, but I know that's not an option. Thank you.
I, I think the remarks are supposed to be directed to the commission rather than the audience.
And you're going to want to convert to your...
Okay. I think you are the ones who would be powered tonight. So, my name is Bethany Knight. I moved to Clinton less than four years ago. I've lived in cities that are large and much smaller than this. The last community I lived in was 900 people in Vermont, but I've also lived in communities of more than 100,000. I've never lived in a community where the budget was voted down all the time, that it seems like it's a tradition, that you have to vote it down twice, and then the third time it's passed. It makes me really sad that in a community this size, we can't agree ahead of time and save $6,000 each election and not call each other names. Uh, I'm just really stunned by that. And I met this week with people representing very disparate groups, and we committed to next year working as some kind of organization, maybe we'll call ourselves Friends of Clinton, to come up with some agreement, so it doesn't turn into this slashing burn technique. But I'd like to suggest that this town has changed the way it's operated because life has changed. 50 years ago, there was no social media, there weren't people suing the town, we didn't need lawyer's expenses, we didn't need to have all the things that we are growing in technology, and yet, we're still doing things that we used to do 50 years ago, like giving the Historical Society a free room in this building. I'm on the Historical Society board. We shouldn't be giving a free room to any nonprofit. We should be getting something in return, looking for revenue. I also feel it's very strange that we subsidize the Chamber of Commerce. I've never lived in a community where business was, was subsidized by the town. It's usually the other way around, that business supports the town. The building the Chamber of Commerce has, as I understand it, is virtually a, almost a rent-free arrangement with their utilities, with us paying for police costs of their events. I think that has to end. It's nice to think we could have afforded it, but if the businesses can't pay for that building, then maybe they need to go to a bank and get a free office space, and let that building be something we can generate rent from, or offer a senior citizen center or something of value to our community. So I, I would like to suggest that some of these old-fashioned things we've done were quaint, but life has changed, and you can see it in the items in your budget that never appeared 50 years ago. So I think we need to look more at creative revenue, uh, not just, um, looking for new businesses to come to town, but how the town itself does business. Thank you.
The current chairman of the board of education.
My name's all here. Erica Geldon to Alton Drive and Sunset, uh, chair of board of education. Um, I just wanted to take a minute...
We switched it to Clinton, Old Saybrook, and Westbrook, and from there we narrowed it down to Clinton because of what a beautiful town it was and the fact that here you've got even more house for your money than you did in Old Saybrook or Westbrook. So, if you have a town like Old Saybrook, like Clinton, and let's say it costs $12 a year to run the town, if you only paid $3 for your house, you're going to have to pay a mill rate of four. If you paid $6 for your house, you only have to pay a mill rate of two. So, of all of the really just screaming about mill rate, I understand the point about mill rate matters to businesses, but when it comes to your house, you chose a town where you got more house for your money. Therefore, in order to get to the amount of money that it needs to run the town, of course, your mill rate's going to be higher because your house costs less. And, but, like I said, I understand the point that mill rate is relevant to businesses, but you can't destroy the schools and the services in the very town that you're trying to sell. You might call the school children a burden as somebody did at the meeting in April, or you might try to turn it into retirement town as some local members of this community wanted to be. But the fact is that the lifeline of any town is families. We need families. We need to support our schools and our town, and that's the lifeline of the town. I respectfully request that the Board of Finance send a forward memo as it was decided to the voters. And this is a roundtable here that was from the Hartford Parents from New Britain, and they had a town meeting before their council or whatever they had. It's not like this is a little different, but people were getting a chance to come in and speak. The proposal that got put forward would hold their tax rate steady at 50 mils, so the owner of a home that is assessed around $140,000 would pay $7,070 next year. It's so important to remember that we not only got more house for our money, but our mill rate is normal too. We're 86 towns in Connecticut have a higher mill rate, 83 have a lower mill rate. So, we're doing better than halfway. We've got a bargain on our homes, and our mill rate is being held totally steady. And I just wish that people would stop trying to punish this town, which is being moral and doing a good job. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Colbing, 84 Wood Lane. And I'm here to support both the education and town budgets, but I'm especially passionate about our education budget, and therefore, I have a lot of numbers, so I'm going to refer to my notes. The CTA claims our education budget is excessive, and their motive tonight is to cut education further. In reality, the facts prove the contrary, especially as Clinton compares to surrounding towns. According to Realtor.com, it's proven that the communities that support education attract families to a town which is worthy of new entertainment. It drives up property values, attracts businesses, increases the tax base, and decreases mill rates. And again, we are in a dress we've got of reasonable mill rates, it is. The real tale of two cities, and there's been comparisons, Old Saybrook to Clinton, demonstrates this point. Old Saybrook spends more on education. Their seven-year average education operating budget increases 2.75% compared to Clinton's 0.85%. The cost for people spending is over $19,000 compared to Clinton's 17,500. Old Saybrook's average home values are 140% higher than Clinton's, 350,000 versus 250,000. Again, as Maria said, you know, it's a bargain. The effect of the mill rate, Old Saybrook's mill rate is 34% lower than Clinton's, 19.66 compared to 29.91. Lastly, Old Saybrook's five-year enrollment decline is higher. Old Saybrook is 15.9 versus Clinton's 11.2, yet they continue to invest in education. Sources are at site.ct.gov, Zillow, and serf.com. If education continues to be cut, Clinton will continue the downward spiral. And again, some of these points have been made, not only will families not move to Clinton, but existing families will leave, and have already heard discussion about this. More families will choose private schools, supporting other towns, and property values will continue to decline. We won't retract businesses, and mill rates will continue to rise. If we don't retract families, we will be a 55-plus community, but what happens after those people are gone will be a ghost town. So, as I said last year, the solution to the Clinton situation is not slashing our education and vital town services by economic development. The children in this town are not a burden, they are an asset in our future. I request the Board of Ed to pass the budgets as proposed and not make additional cuts. Honestly, I would actually request that we, of what we voted on the last, on May 10th, but I know that's not an option. Thank you.
I think the remarks are supposed to be directed to the commission rather than the audience.
And the way you want to correct your.
Okay. I think you are the ones who would be powered tonight. So, my name is Bethany Knight. I moved to Clinton less than four years ago. I've lived in cities that are large and much smaller than this. The last community I lived in was 900 people in Vermont, but I've also lived in communities of more than 100,000. I've never lived in a community where the budget was voted down all the time, that it seems like it's a tradition that you have to vote it down twice and then the third time it's passed. Makes me really sad that in a community this size, we can't agree ahead of time and save $6,000 each election and not call each other names. I'm just really stunned by that. And I met this week with people representing very disparate groups, and we committed to next year working as some kind of organization, maybe we'll call ourselves Friends in Clinton, to come up with some agreement so it doesn't turn into this slashing the burn technique. But I'd like to suggest that this town has changed the way it's operated because life has changed. 50 years ago, there was no social media, there weren't people suing the town, we didn't need lawyer's expenses, we didn't need to have all the things that we are growing in technology, and yet, we're still doing things that we used to do 50 years ago, like giving the Historical Society a free room in this building. I'm on the Historical Society board. We shouldn't be giving a free room to any nonprofit. We should be getting something in return, looking for revenue. I also feel it's very strange that we subsidize the Chamber of Commerce. I've never lived in a community where business was subsidized by the town. It's usually the other way around, that business supports the town. The building the Chamber of Commerce has, as I understand it, is virtually almost a rent-free arrangement with their utilities, with us paying for police costs of their events. I think that has to end. It's nice to think we could have afforded it, but if the businesses can't pay for that building, then maybe they need to go to a bank and get a free office space and let that building be something we can generate rent from or offer a senior citizen center or something of value to our community. So, I would like to suggest that some of these old-fashioned things we've done were quaint, but life has changed. And you can see it in items in your budget that never appeared 50 years ago. So, I think we need to look more at creative revenue, not just looking for new businesses to come to town, but how the town itself does business. Thank you.
The current chairman of the Board of Education.
Again, it's all here. Erica Geldon to Alton Drive and Sutton, Chair of the Board of Education. I just wanted to take a minute to let you know about the cuts made last night by the Budget and Finance Subcommittee for Education and the Superintendent in response to the Board of Finance's directive to cut $179,267. But before I do so, I'm pleased to report that the amount of funding Clinton is believed to receive from the state, our so-called PCS funding, has increased from earlier projections to about $5.6 million, so that's good news in our favor. And I just want to let you know that the cuts that we made on our side all along, but certainly this $179,000, were not easy or meaningless. They do include further changes to teaching staff and professional development. They include changes associated by recent administrative shifts in the district. They do include cuts to athletic spending, and they include cuts to the supplies used for our schools' day-to-day operations. I would encourage everyone to look at the district website, where we will be posting all of our budgetary information, so if you have any questions, I'm available for any questions at any time. My joke is my, I'm a college professor, my semester ended yesterday, so feel free to take up all my time because I won't know what to do with myself between now and September with any questions. But one other point that I would just like to address about process is about our awareness of debt service and our budget. And it's, you know, I was kind of trained financially that you make your capital expenditures based upon the operating budget realities that you have, and the town's decision to vote for the new high school was made with that budgetary reality in mind. You know, obviously, the town voted for the high school, this was the town's will, and that's the project, that's how the project unfolded. And while we are always cognizant of those budgetary realities, we do still have to operate a school district, and we have to make sure that we are meeting students' needs. We would actually be operating in a front of the law if we did not do that. So, to your question, we do, you know, it's not like we're someone like, "Oh, we don't care about this, Dalton, I'm not here," but we still have to do what we've been charged to do. So, thank you very much. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for being partners in this with us. I know I, for one, feel very grateful to kind of have, I'm grateful for our partnership. I'm grateful that we can work together and we can have a conversation, and we can, at the end of the day, we all want to ask for Clinton. So, thank you very much.
That's the last speaker I have on the list. Does anyone else want to speak before the board? Right down there, I'll close the public area and we'll call the Board of Finance before.